All right, let's call to order the regular business meeting of the Board of Education for Monday, December 8th. If I could ask everyone to please stand and recite the Pledge of Allegiance. All right, welcome everybody, we've got a big crowds tonight. Appreciate everybody coming. Let's see. Can I have the roll call, please?
Steven Arthur.
Here.
Jim Batson.
Here.
Alex Dellicoli.
Here.
Pat Corruti.
Here.
Karen Lomstad.
Here.
Ellen Mauer.
Here.
Bill Ratsar.
Here. All right, so we know for the record, everybody's here tonight. Our agenda, we have both student and staff recognition this evening, so again, welcome. No real comments on the President's Report, we'll have updates from all of our school board representatives, superintendent's report, then we'll open it up for public comment. Again, I'll remind everyone, if you do want to speak, that's great, but we'd ask you to limit your comments to three minutes or less. We'll approve the consent vote agenda, which we discussed earlier this evening in committee. Very brief update from Program and Personnel Committee, also discussed this evening. Update from Facility and Finance, also discussed earlier today. Steven, will you actually comment on property at all, or are we just going to reconvene?
No, just we're going to have a meeting in January.
Okay. And then, so you don't care? Okay. Illinois Association of School District. All right, and then we will convene an executive session to discuss purchase or lease of real property. We will not be taking any action after that executive session this evening. All right? Okay, so with that, let's move on to our student recognition. Are you in the staff list?
We're in the student recognition. Al, you want to lead us into that? Student?
So tonight, clearly, we have a large group of students that we'd like to recognize their accomplishments, and we're going to start with Maria Scott on Libertyville High School.
Good evening, everyone. As we mentioned at our last board meeting, Libertyville experienced a very successful fall and exciting fall sports season, and part of what made that so exciting was our football team. One thing you also recognized in the letter that Prentice shared was, it's the culture that's created that's just as important as the strategy that's on the field. Here tonight, we have our coach, Mike Jones, and he's going to introduce one of our All-State players.
I have the honor of introducing Riley Lees, who is an All-State football player. Riley was responsible for over thirty-three hundred yards of offense and forty-five touchdowns. He was a Pioneer Press First Team All-Area member. He was Daily Herald All-Area Team Captain, and he was the only junior in Class 7A to be named All-State. But more importantly, he's an outstanding young man, and he gets another year to make us look like we know what we're doing. So, Riley Lees.
We too had a successful fall in terms of athletics. We're going to continue on that theme. I'm going to bring up Bill Belacomo, our head football coach, with a couple of announcements.
As tall as John. Cougar football actually had two All-State Honorable Mention. First is Stephen Didier. Stephen had eighty-five tackles for us, nine tackles for loss, and nine sacks. He was also a member of the All-Conference Team and All-Area Team. This is a sad moment because this is the end of a Didier era here at Vernon Hills High School. Our second member comes from a family that's having a real good football year, the McNamara family. Connor threw for twenty-two hundred yards, twenty-two touchdowns, and he ran for another nine touchdowns. The good thing is, we got Connor coming back. He was a member of the All-Conference Team and All-Area Team. Connor's back.
Then also at Vernon Hills, continuing their run of excellence, our cross-country teams, both did outstandingly well this fall. So I'm going to introduce Suzanne Curry, who's going to represent both boys and girls cross-country tonight. Suzanne?
Unfortunately, Mark Whitney could not be here tonight, so first, I'm going to start with the boys. Shane Williamson is one All-State athlete, but he's unable to be here tonight. He's not feeling well. So I'm going to bring up Tyler Smith, and a couple of words from his coach. Tyler was a senior captain, finished twentieth in the state this year for All-State Honors. He had a personal best by seven seconds with a time of fifteen oh one, which is one of the top five times in Vernon Hills High School history. So congratulations, Tyler. And now on the girl's side, Vivian Overbet. Vivian just ran in her third state meet this year. This was her second time being All-State. She finished thirteenth this year with a time of seventeen forty-nine. She has the second-best time in school history and the first-best time that she ran last year. So congratulations, Vivian, on another great season.
is an equally successful fine arts program. So I have Dustin Helby to introduce our Theater Fest participants, All-State Honorable.
Good evening. Illinois High School Theater Festival is one of the oldest non-competitive festivals in the country, and we are very pleased to have three All-State musicians participating in Pippin this year. They auditioned in August and were selected, and we couldn't be more proud. We have three students, Jane Recker, who couldn't be here tonight, and our second student is Rebecca Townsend, trombone. And we're also very fortunate in the district to have wonderful staff members working with these students, and we also have Kevin Holly, who was selected as the lighting designer for the All-State production.
And Vernon Hills has a group as well that will be performing in Pippin for Theater Fest as well, so I'm going to introduce Drew Russell, our Fine and Performing Arts Supervisor, to introduce those folks.
Well, I think it's important to note that there's about ninety students in total that are a part of the All-State Theater Festival, the All-State Play specifically, and we have eleven of those students right here in this district. So from a percentage standpoint, it really truly is remarkable for our students, and I couldn't be more proud to be a part of this program. All right, first, we have Aubrey Black, who is in the cast. Congratulations. Kevin Bose, who is in the pit. Via Candosia, who's also in the cast. Scott Kinnear, who is in the pit. Sarah Shaines, who's in the crew. And unable to make it are Scott Bass and Sari Lee. We also have our very own Kevin, who is the lighting designer, I'm sorry, the technical director, they got it wrong, we talked about this before, the technical director, Kevin Phelan.
We have one staff recognition that we'd like you to hear, too, but before we do that, I want to tell you on behalf of the board and the district administration, and certainly the two grade administrations at the board, at the buildings, and all of your teachers, this is our favorite thing to do, is recognize students. But, and we are so proud of all of you, okay, but we also know that the parents here and family members have made many, many sacrifices for your kids to be as successful as they are. So what we'd like to do right now is to have all the parents and family members stand up, and we're going to give you a round of applause, too, okay? And as I mentioned, we have one staff recognition tonight that is very cool. Diane Phillips has been presented an award from Learning Resources Network International. It's an award for Excellence in Management Practice, and Diane's going to tell you a little bit about this award, but it is a big deal. It's an international award that recognizes the programs that Diane oversees on behalf of the school district. And Diane has been in the district, I won't ask you how many years, Diane?
Twenty-one.
Twenty-one years, and has worked in several leadership positions for us and continues to do an outstanding job. So we're going to ask Diane to come up and give us a little bit of an overview, and then I have two recognitions to give her, and then we're going to take some pictures, and then we'll let the parents and the students go home. So Diane?
As Prentice said, the Community Education Program for District 128 won an award from LEARN, which is Learning Resource Network. It's an international foundation that has about six thousand members, and I applied for a Management Practice Award, and we won. We were chosen out of a hundred and forty applicants. So very proud of the accomplishment that we made, and it is one of the largest organizations for continuing and lifelong learning in, I guess, the world, nine countries. The previous director, Dr. Buzz Perry, formed a strategic partnership with District 125, which is Stevenson High School, and District 214, to kind of bring the resources together because as each program continues to grow, we kind of compete against each other. So he came up with the idea many years ago to join forces, which I continue to build on that foundation that he put together. Because, you know, Stevenson is very close to us, we share, you know, some of the same district boundaries in Vernon Hills, and, you know, we have this great idea. We share about fifteen to twenty classes each term, and we cross-advertise and cross-promote. You know, the different districts get to see our prospective buildings and to celebrate all the opportunities that we can offer the community. The main goal, like I said, of joining the programs, 214's travel program and the 125 program and District 128, is to manage costs, generate community support, expand our customer base, and provide a broader scope of opportunities for our community. I know that I presented before to the board, our catalog, and I'm going to do, this is our current catalog, goes out to thirty-nine thousand people just in District 128 and Mundeline. By cross, kind of pollinating our programs, our programs will go out to another forty thousand residents in the Stevenson District. So, you know, our customer base increased to seventy-nine thousand without really doing a lot of work. And with District 214, we were able to offer about thirty-five travel programs that are day trips and week-long trips, cruises, and we couldn't do that on our own. So it's a great opportunity for us to be recognized for what Buzz Perry put together and that we continue to support, and obviously, we couldn't do all this without the board's support and the administrator's support. So thank you very much, and hope to see you in a class soon.
And I would add to that, without the great work that Diane's done, don't you think? Let's give her a round of applause. So Diane received this very special plaque from LEARN and the International Award for Excellence in Management Practice, and we want to give it to her to display this evening, and we also have a certificate from the district. So Diane, thank you for your high-quality work here and your continued commitment to District 128 and all of our residents. We truly appreciate your work. So I ask Pat to come over and congratulate you, so thank you. So thanks to all the students and our staff tonight, we've had a couple of other staff members here, and thank you so much for coming, and we are so very, very proud of all of you. Thanks again, and have a great evening. Now, if you want to stay for the board meeting, that'd be great, okay by us, but I'm not sure any of you will do that, so if you'd like to leave, you can do that. We'll give you an easy exit, stay right.
I struggle, sometimes I don't know what I like more. I like seeing the education presentations that we have, but I also enjoy this especially at night, like tonight, we can celebrate both kinds of things, and athletic success, those are rare days, and they're wonderful. And you glossed over the comments because we read the letter last time, but I think even better than all the things that we celebrated tonight, the fact that we gave that, we got the last class, how great the kids are on the sideline behavior, it just says so much about the kids and what they do. All right, I have nothing specific, other than hard to believe we're almost at the halfway point of the year, because this is our last meeting before the holidays, so I do want to say thanks to everybody for your hard work in the first half of the semester. If experience is any indicator, the second half tends to go by even quicker, so I don't know, I'm probably not jumping the gun by saying it won't be too long before we're planning for graduation. Hopefully, that means the winter will go by quickly, too. All right, so thanks again for all of your hard work, and I think Dr. Gilliam's a veteran now. I am a veteran, so almost arrived in the first semester. How's he doing, by the way?
Yeah, I haven't seen much.
He's doing a great job.
I think she wants to give you a big hug now, John, so.
He's doing a great job, I'll go lunch for you next month.
I'm staying class.
Okay, reports from our student reps. Who would like to go first?
So with fine arts, thirteen of our students made it to All-State, which is like a great number because most schools tend to have like around five, usually around five, which is like outstanding for us. There's a band concert this Thursday, and then our sold-out Magical Dessert Concert takes place this Saturday, and the holiday concert is next Tuesday, which involves both orchestra and choir, and then some band members as well. And the chamber choir will be performing on ninety-nine point five next Wednesday in the morning, and they love going there, and they love the choir students as well, so it's a win-win. And then for student activities, we had the variety show last Thursday, which raised about two thousand dollars for Cove Lines, and it will be hopefully going to the sister school and like providing for like a Christmas party for them. And at the variety show, International Club sold different holiday decorations, and Dr. Gilliam gave students the opportunity to pie him in the face, but it turned out to be a student from another school. But then, yeah, she won the Oreo challenge.
Cat over at Lake, who showed up, I don't know.
But then he also told the students in the audience that he would donate fifty dollars for him to be able to pie someone in the face. So someone was eagerly able to go up and get the pie in the face. Also, that, it was a huge support from the community, there was a lot of donations from local businesses and restaurants to give us different door prizes such as like the light show, noodles and company, Chick-fil-A. So it was a large community effort to help Cove Lines and our sister school in Nevada.
So for sports and clubs, our girls' basketball team, which I'm proud to be a part of this year, won our Thanksgiving tournament this past week, so that was really exciting for us. JV varsity and swimming boys placed first in their Maine East Invite this past weekend, which is really exciting for them. Math team also placed second on their Thursday Invite last week. This past weekend, varsity pounds, I'm sorry, varsity pounds also placed first in their Lakeside Invite, and robotics this past weekend placed first, second, and third at their invite. So, go Boers!
So to start off with clubs, this semester, you've actually had three new clubs join LHS. So one of them is the Deaf Culture Club, which will be having its first meeting this, I believe, Thursday. And so basically, it's just like informing people about people with like hearing disabilities and just kind of like bringing everyone together and just learning more about the effort and trying to fight it and trying to, you know, just kind of unify together. Also, we have Advocats, which is a women's rights club. It's like for men and women, but anyone who is willing to fight for equal rights for both women and men. And then also, we have Cookies and Code, which is really new, like just came up this week, actually. And so that's just for any students who are interested in learning about coding, coding, like just in general, who are like experienced, and so I think that's a really great opportunity because that's definitely coming up a lot in a lot of our different classes, so. Also, for the LHS WISE team, they finished second in a competition out of eighteen teams this past weekend in the Milwaukee School of Engineering. Individual medalists consisted of Hannah Gartner, Alex Heschecker Gomez, Jason G., Anker Stogie, and Daniel Zau. In the debate tournament, we had individual medalists for Anker Stogie, second place, Elizabeth and Elizabeth Murphy for second place's speaker award. For math team, we had a home meet this past Thursday. LHS won and is now in the top twelve of the conference, which includes all suburban schools, including Stevenson, Whitney Young, and all of those. And then also, our robotics team placed fourth out of thirty teams at the ABVI Regional Tournament this past weekend as well.
All right, just one more thing on the club side. The LHS Molly Run team is going to be going towards their next and last Out of State Conference for the year in February, that's going to be, excuse me, in January, that's going to be at Columbia University. So it's right after finals, we're leaving the day, the last day of finals on the fifteenth. We're excited, it's going to be a fun trip, and hopefully we'll bring back some trophies. So in terms of the athletics at LHS, obviously, we have the transition from the fall sports to the winter sports. Our JV varsity dance team actually had first-place finishes at the Lakeside Invite, so that's good to hear. And of course, winter sports have begun that includes bowling, basketball, and the like. And then on the academic side, similar to Cookies and Code, LHS has put together a student technology team that's being pushed forward heavily inside of the computer science classes for recruits, and it's just kind of an organization to help tech side students to help their fellow peers, you know? If somebody needs help with the tech side of maybe working with Google Docs or something along those lines, they have a resource for that now. Students and teachers are starting to ramp up for final exams for the first semester, always a fun time. Starting to prep that now, obviously, final exams are going to have an after break, but never too early to start studying. And finally, for the seniors at both LHS and Vernon Hills, for those kids who apply early action, early decision to schools, we're going to start finding out our notifications of admission or otherwise in the next few weeks, so it's going to be an exciting time for a lot of people here.
Just a few miscellaneous things. Wish fundraisers are winding down, and that's fundraiser in their third-period classes. Students raise money to purchase gifts for those in need. So we have raised money. My personal favorite fundraiser was someone set up a lambs farm petting zoo inside the school. So, it looked pretty popular, I didn't go in. So now we're shopping for gifts, and we're purchasing presents for the families. And then, we give the gifts to the families at the annual Wish Dinner next Wednesday, December seventeenth. It's also a good month for food at LHS. Last, I think it was Wednesday, it was National Cookie Day, and so as we left, we got cookies, so that was nice. And Hot Cocoa Fridays are also back, which is always a treat. Finally, College Cast Return is a new event that RCRC is holding, so over fifty college students have signed up to come back from college and come to LHS and sort of report back on the experiences that they've had at their schools. That's all I have.
All right, great job. Actually, what impresses me is there's a lot of new events, and I don't know, maybe we just didn't highlight those as much in the past, but it just sounds like there's some really great new things going on.
I want to go back to high school.
How do you do Hot Cocoa?
Every Friday, it's interesting.
You show up at LHS a Friday, and if you're lucky, Marina will serve it to you.
What I always cheat about the first Friday is the freshmen pull out their money.
I was telling Dr. Lita, I miss the bake sales.
There's plenty of those, they're about one in every third P.A. class.
I'll have to go another day then.
What was in the group, that Cookies and Code?
Yeah, Cookies and Code.
Yeah, okay, I got to take that back to my staff, that's, I got a lot of cookies.
Continuing education people, they might have some faculty.
The student technology assistants are called Chrome Casts.
Really? I believe this is Computer Science Education Week, so starting that Coke, Cookies and Code today. That's a good time to start. Speaking of Mr. Batson's language here, so.
All right, absolutely some great stuff going on. Appreciate all your hard work. All right, next, superintendent.
Okay, we've already reported on WISE team, so I won't say that again, because you guys did a great job of that. Following students were named LHS December Students of the Month. Brittany Barrera, Chuck Colterman, Yvonne Sun, Shelby Wilson, Grace Lynch, Lily Marcus, Kyra Johnson, Angela Pedrajita, Grace Lipter, Chris Hayvogel, Tyler Yost, and Patrick Early. So congratulations to them. LHS sophomore Skylar Jakem and Brian Lemay qualified defense in the Junior Olympics in Richmond, Virginia in February two thousand and fifteen. Jakem won a bronze medal, and Lemay won a silver medal at the Junior Olympic Qualifier Tournament held November twenty-third at Northwestern University. Lemay will compete in the men's junior saber event, while Jakem will compete in the women's cadet saber event. They will compete against some of the top fencers in the United States. Wow, that's very impressive. The District 128 Foundation for Learning Trustees have announced the recipients of the two thousand fourteen, fifteen Foundation Innovation Grants for Learning. The grants awarded annually to Libertyville High School and Vernon Hills High Schools' school teachers funds projects that will enhance and enrich student learning at LHS and VHHS. This year's twelve grants totaled twenty-two thousand, six hundred and three dollars, bringing the total amount of money awarded by their foundation since two thousand and eight to one hundred and twenty-three thousand, nine hundred and sixty-three dollars. So we really do want to appreciate the foundation's efforts on behalf of all of our students and the teachers who work with those students. LHS team director Sean Farrell was a triple award winner at the Fifty-third Annual Illinois State Deans Association Conference held last month in Lisle. Mr. Farrell received the ISDA Dean of the Year Award, the President's Lifetime Achievement Award, and the Distinguished Service Award, and for those of you... And for those of you that know Sean, very deserving of all those awards. Couldn't have gone to a nicer individual. The VHHS Freshman Transition Program participated in a service project to make fleece tie blankets for patients at Lurie Children's Hospital in Chicago. Students completed fifty blankets that will be delivered before the holidays. The Chinese Language Association of Secondary Elementary Schools, the only nationwide Chinese teacher association, recently hosted the eleventh national student essay contest. LHS students Anne Hong and Christine Shi received first-place Golden Apple Awards in the competition, and Kimber Darwin, Aldrin Alvarez, and Lucy Zhang received second-place Silver Apple Awards. So congratulations to all of them. And LHS English teachers Michael Gluskin and Diane Naslin have successfully completed the rigorous process and have met the high standards necessary to be named National Board Certified Teachers. This brings the total number of National Board Certified Teachers in District 128 to twenty-two. And when we began this journey several years ago, we started with two teachers, and we are now up to twenty-two. So congratulations to those teachers. That's really very, very exciting news. Next on the superintendent's report this evening is donation acknowledgements. So we have several donations. We want to thank Mr. Kevin Walgren, who donated a nineteen-seventy-five MG vehicle to Libertyville High School. This donation, I know you guys don't know what we're talking about. All of us are age.
I saw that. I have a seventy-two MG B.
An MG and Triumph cars were really close. They were very small English convertibles. So sorry for our flashback to our earlier days, so you could see that reaction.
When we were your age, and we were literally your age.
This vehicle, and I want to see your seventy-two sometime, Stephen, because I had a Triumph Spitfire one time. This vehicle will be used at our, don't get us started, the Libertyville, vehicle will be used at our Libertyville High School campus by the automotive tech classes, and will be junked once it is of no further use. Not if Stephen can help it. So our next donation.
Before we dispose of it, we should ask him if he needs to buy some spare parts.
Was from Mr. Lance Piccolo. And we want to thank Mr. Piccolo for his donation of a new sideline capes and jackets to the Libertyville High School football team. The value of the items that he donated is five thousand, seven hundred and seven dollars. So thank you very much to Mr. Piccolo. Much appreciated. And last from the superintendent tonight, the board will note that we had four for-year requests this month as contained in your packet. And Pat, that completes the superintendent's report.
Okay. Just out of curiosity on this board certified teachers, I mean, twenty-two is a big number. Any idea how that is relative to the surrounding districts? Have you seen?
I think, well, I think it's growing. I think it's growing. That number is, that number is growing, and if you look at the size of our district and the ratio of the staff, the students in this district, the number's really impressive. And although the public wouldn't recall this unless they've been following us closely, but three contracts ago, we actually put some very cutting-edge language in our teacher contract to support the continued development of our teachers here. And the district has also committed a smaller amount of resources to actually have a formal mentor for those teachers, which really helps keep them moving through the process. Brian Twaddell, who was one of our first board certified teachers in the district, serves in that role with some support from several others in the group, including Paul Reeve. And we just continue to, we have some years with five, some years with two, but we get, teachers keep applying for that, and it's really cool to see that growth over several years.
Yeah, true. Okay, anybody from the public would like to speak? Nope, seeing none. Consent vote agenda is listed, as I mentioned, we reviewed it earlier this evening in the committee. Could I have a motion to approve the consent vote agenda?
I move to approve the consent vote agenda, assistant.
Second. All right, any discussion? If not, roll call, please.
Arthur.
Aye.
Datsun.
Aye.
Deli Pollock.
Aye.
Rudy.
Aye.
Munstead.
Aye.
Maurer.
Aye.
Okay, motion carries. Program and Personnel Committee Chair, personnel.
Hey, we have one item, and it's to approve the seven educational tour requests as listed.
I'll move for approval of the seven requests as listed.
Second.
Any discussion? Roll call, please.
Datsun.
Aye.
Deli Pollock.
Aye.
Rudy.
Aye.
Munstead.
Aye.
Maurer.
Aye.
Ratsor.
Aye.
Arthur.
Aye.
Aye.
Okay, motion carries.
There is no other, so we are finished.
All right, Facilities and Finance Committee.
Actually, we have nothing to vote on tonight unless we have anything under the other category.
Any others? Okay. That includes it. Property Committee.
Just that we're planning a meeting in January to meet.
Okay, January twelfth.
That's the tentative date. All right. Seagull.
And I apologize, I left my specific notes at home, kind of mistake. But we did meet last week, and the major item that was being presented on and discussed was the upcoming exit of three districts from the co-op. And so they're looking at a loss of three and a half million dollars, so that's a pretty grave concern. And so they were talking about some ways they try to, might try to make that up, kind of thing from privatizing maybe one of their schools. They've got, I think, seven different locations, and they talked about many different things. And they feel like they're about halfway there with some concrete things that they've got going, but they're still working on that. It's a pretty heavy concern. There was now Lake Zirk, when they pulled out a few years before that, was that one district, a unit district?
Yes, unit district, right.
So right now, it's Stevenson and their feeder districts, so that makes up the three. But they did lose the Lake Zirk district several years prior to that. So it seems they've polled all the different districts, there's still thirty-two districts that'll be left. To just try to get a sense of, is this going to be continuing to happen, it really is going to have a major effect on the property. So they're working on trying to see how they best can meet the needs of the special ed students in this county. And so that was the majority of the meeting. And I apologize again for not getting more specific.
No, that's all right. Thanks, Karen. Did you say it was?
No, you're welcome.
All right, then we're going to move into an executive session. Again, the subject is purchase or lease of real property, five ILCS one-twenty slash two C four. Could I have a motion to move into executive session? So move. Second. Roll call, please.
Deli Pollock.
Aye.
Rudy.
Aye.
Munstead.
Aye.
Maurer.
Aye.
Arthur.
Aye.
Datsun.
Okay, motion carries. Again, we will not take any action after the executive session tonight. All right, thanks for a great meeting. Good night, everyone. Great job.